Are we ready? We ready?
Right.
Call the meeting total, let the record show this is a regular city council meeting held on May 16th. All members of council are present. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, it currently looks like we don't have a quorum for the planning commission. So if it pleases counsel, I'd like to move item number three, which is the executive session, up to item number one, and then move the public hearing to item number three, and the joint planning commission meeting down to item number two. That is my motion. Does counsel have a second?
Second.
Any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to go into executive. Sit down there.
Sit down. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice pursuant to a bond ordinance for the fire station in Stonecrest and contractual matters pursuant to the sale of city property.
A motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye.
Aye.
For an executive session. Counsel is back in open session while in executive session only the item on the agenda was discussed. No votes were taken, other returned to open session. For those of you who were not here, we adjusted the agenda a little bit, where we took item number three, which was the executive session, we moved that up to item number one, because there wasn't a quorum of the planning commission. So now we're going to move on what your agenda says as item number one is now item number two, and what your agenda says as item number two is item number three. So at this point, we're going to go to item number two, which is the joint public hearing with the planning commission. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Britt. Jerry Church? Okay. Jerry Church as the chair of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'd like to open up this special planning commission meeting with joint session with council. We do have a quorum. We're only missing Chris Leonard and Benson DeRosa. And we got on the agenda today, a rezoning. And I'd like to bring Susan up to tell us about it.
Thank you, counsel and planning commission. The applicants proposing to annex and rezon approximately 57.51 acres along Dam Road and Gardendale Roads as a planned development district. The uses proposed within the PDD are a mix of uses, including single-family detached and attached residential, and then government services and operations, including public recreation. The total density permitted within the residential site would be a maximum of 3.2 gross units per acre, or 155 homes, as both detached and attached. This is very compatible to the adjacent nearby residential plan developments of Serenity Point and Lake Ridge, which are already within the city's borders. Approximately 8.89 acres of the project area will be due to the city via land swap for the 6.9 acres of land that is owned by the city that's currently not contiguous and therefore is unincorporated. The city would utilize this property for operations and potentially recreation services. The location of this proposed development was identified in the city's growth management strategic plan as an important target for annexation. This was due to the potential for a greater level and intensity of residential development that could be permitted under the county's comprehensive plan. The subject property is located in an area identified in the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan and future land use map as containing a mix of residential, government, institutional, and recreational uses that integrate flexible design standards compatible with the principles outlined in the plan. It's also generally in the location that's been identified as a future growth area in the plan. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning is appropriate because it is compatible with the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan, and the site is located in an area identified for annexation. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to the developer, Robert Wiggins with Madamie Homes, and Matt LeVek with ESP Associates.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Wiggins.
Hi, Bob.
Hello. I represent Madamie Homes. I reside at 4301 Berkshire Heights, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I've got just a brief presentation here, just going over the highlights of the development. Matt LeVek here is with us with ESP, as is Matt Mandel. And Matt's going to put up just a hard phone board of the proposed site plan, and we'll have one on the screen as well in the presentation. Got you. Okay. All right. This is a little over 57 acres together. And the property is located right at the intersection of Gardendale and Dam Road. And there's an aerial down here, too, and we'll show that as well. Before we get started, just like, just a couple of seconds to tell you about Madamie Homes. It was founded in the late 70s by Peter Gilgan. Madamie is the largest private home builder in North America, operating, as you can see on that map, and virtually all over Canada, the southeastern United States, the southwest, and a division up in Minnesota. Last year, Madamie closed around 4,000 homes, about a little over $2 billion in revenue in Canadian dollars. I was, before you all, a couple of years ago, for a site called Cameron Creek when I was with MI Homes. I think it's important to show you some of the developments that I have personally managed acquisition, entitlement, and development on in the area. One is Sutton Mill, that's on Sutton Road in Fort Mill. Cameron Creek is on Highway 160, and Hawks Creek is right here on Gold Hill. All of those were managed by myself and other members of MI Homes that are now at Madamie. Okay. This is a space shot of the site. The lower left-hand side, you can see a red perimeter around the site. So you kind of get the general idea of the location here in the Fort Mill Township. And we're zooming in a little bit more. You can see the lake right there. The Gold Hill Elementary and Middle Complex is to the east. The Walmart Supercenter is up to the north. Okay? And on the screen and the board, this is the proposed site plan. It's a mix of 50-foot lots and townhome lots. We have proposed this mix because we feel like it's in keeping what the area needs for housing. The 50-foot lots will be geared more toward empty nesters. We'd like to focus on ranch homes here, which is a much-needed product, as well as the townhomes. Entry-level pricing in that price point is of much need here. Growth has been a big conversation in the community lately, and, you know, one of the things that came out of those growth conversations is the, you know, the average price of a new house in Fort Mill is approaching, and I say Fort Mill Township, is approaching $400,000. So we need to be conscious of affordability for everyone here. Not everyone can afford that level of home. Now, these will still be very high-quality homes, I think. Charlotte did still have some product in here after this? Okay. And I'll jump back to product in just a second. So, right now, we're going to look at the existing conditions around Dam Road and Gardendale. And it's wooded, older residential homes through here, one old frame structure in this area, and then the site is just generally wooded after that. Okay, back to product. This is a townhome product at our Ayrshire neighborhood on Pleasant Road across from the Publix. That has been open for about six months and selling very well. That is actually right across the street from our model home right there. And then here's a ranch home in our Kings Grove neighborhood down in the Lake Wiley area. So this is just a representation of our architectural detail and the style of homes that we build.
What price points are you thinking of?
On the townhomes, they would be in the low to mid-200s. And then on the detached homes, these would be in the mid-3s and probably a little bit north of that. We also want to focus on a maintained neighborhood. We haven't completely nailed that down. We're still going through the engineering and design process and have to come up with a cost and everything. But one of the options we're looking at here is having fully-maintained yards on both the single-family detached and the townhomes, which would support that age-targeted target. And really, with that, that's all I have for the presentation. I'm here and available for any questions, as is our consultants, Matt LeVek and Matt Mandel. If I could answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Well, good.
I have some questions, John. Regarding the ranch-style homes, you're saying they're age-targeted?
Microphone, John.
Sorry, thank you. Regarding the ranch-style homes that you're saying are towards the empty nesters?
Right.
How many bedrooms and bath will those include?
There'll be three bedrooms and typically two-and-a-half baths. What we like to utilize is the attic space in the ranch homes, where you can go up and flex into bonus spaces, or, you know, maybe it's one bedroom and a big bonus, or two bedrooms and a small bonus and a bath. Something people can, you know, shut the door to the upstairs when they don't have visitors in and still really live on the main level for the most part.
Okay. So, and how would we be differentiating that from a starter home with children? If you're age-targeting those, if you have three bedrooms?
Well, typically, what we find is if you target the ranch-type home, the story-and-a-half home, you're going to attract the empty nester set more so than the typical family will gravitate toward the two-bedroom home. A lot of times, folks with young families, we see, would rather have Master up with the other bedrooms upstairs to be close to the children. Then in the teenage years, you know, there's a gravitation toward a Master down and, you know, kick the kids upstairs or keep them upstairs.
Or have a separate house for them.
Yes, sir, at times, I suppose. And then maybe in the empty nester years, you know, when you start getting in the 50s and the children are out, kind of the lock the upstairs and live on the downstairs. So on the downstairs, you may, a lot of these homes, they may be three bedrooms, but one of those bedrooms might flex to a den or office space, or, you know, have the French doors and be a different type of living area or something like that. So there's flexibility within the design. Some could be a two-bedroom, some could be three-plus, depending on how they're outfitted.
Okay. And we do need starter homes. That is definitely something in our comprehensive plan that we've all acknowledged needed. But I'm not sure a $250,000 townhome is really a starter point for a new family.
Right.
Is that the starting point for most new homeowners now?
It is in today's reality for new homes, unfortunately, especially in a popular area. That's the economics.
Okay. And will all of their homes be at least a two-car minimum?
Yes.
Okay. And what types of siding or surfacing would you be allowing on the sides of the home?
It would be hardy plank.
Okay. So no vinyl?
No.
And staff, I know that you guys have been targeting different businesses for economic development purposes. Do we have any of them coming back to say that their model is showing that we need a certain amount of more rooftops to make it work, so they would be coming to TK?
The ones that we have heard back from, that we have reached out to, yes. They've said that it doesn't fit their business model at this point, as far as... Biggest thing they look at is number of rooftops and vehicular traffic, vehicle trips past certain projects. But I think we've got some information that's part of our later executive session that we'll be discussing, that may lend itself towards part of that conversation. But what we've been discussing at this point, what we've heard back from the folks that we've reached out to, that's what they've told us, is they're looking for, once you're a certain mileage away from the, and all of them are different, but once you're a certain mileage away from the interstate, they're looking for rooftops and number of vehicle trips.
Okay. And you referenced Hawks Creek?
Yes.
So what is the size of those lots?
Those are 50-foot, 60-foot, and 70-foot lots, a mix throughout the neighborhood.
It's a mix, okay. Because some of those seem really tight. That's why I was asking about that. But that could have been the smaller ones. And what size bedrooms are on that project, then? So I could have a reference point.
What size bedrooms?
Or how many bedrooms on those homes?
Oh, I would say three to five.
Okay.
But I don't know that for a fact today. But, I mean, the neighborhood was geared more toward, you know, the typical family of the community. So it's going to be, you know, geared toward the two-stories and more bedrooms. There are some, you know, higher-end ranch homes up front, but they'll still have about the same number of bedrooms.
You good? Ryan?
I'm fine.
Dottie?
I'm fine.
David? Jerry, could you do me a favor and give me some kind of sense of where the planning commission is on this? You guys have seen it before us. You've had some discussions about it. What are your, can you give me some kind of sense of what, how that meeting took place and what the planning commission discussed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did discuss this on our last planning commission meeting last Monday. For the most part, we saw and we understood and we kind of liked it. We obviously would like to see them a little farther apart, but we understand, you know, the economics and the price point today, it may or may not work, but it's something we still asked about. And we, you know, we talked about the usage of the lot, the Village C, you know, and some other aspects of this. But for the most part, I didn't hear a lot of negative from our meeting.
Okay. One of, thank you, Jerry. One of my concerns is the distance between the houses. I drive by Brayden every now and then, and I hate the way that looks. Absolutely hate the way that looks. You can pass a cup of sugar from one window to the next, and I just think it's not something that, my opinion, it's not something that I want here, is the Brayden project. And just looking at these pictures, it looks to me as if some of these houses are similar to the distance between the homes and the Brayden project. I realize that we do have some here in the Lake Ridge area, but it's just not, I don't like the distance between the houses, to be perfectly honest with you.
Yes, sir, I understand, certainly respect that. Ms. Masters brought that up last week as well, the distance between. The site plan is set up with five-foot side yards, and so a 50-foot lot would have a 40-foot wide chassis home. And that is the same setup that you'll typically find throughout Charlotte. It's an efficient setup. We talked about the, you know, pricing becoming an issue on affordability. Well, if we add 20 feet to a lot, we're just going in the opposite direction of affordability. Brayden does have those five-foot side yards, Hawks Creek does, Sutton Mill, areas of Lake Ridge, Cameron Creek does, and this is proposed as well. And my neighborhood in Baxter, and the home I live in, has those same side yards. So you, we all have opinion and have to respect each other's opinion on things, but the market does vote. And if that was not a popular thing, or was looked down upon, then the houses wouldn't sell, and that would drive economic change. So if it's an efficient way to build a neighborhood, and our market and our consumer accepts it, and looking around Fort Mill, they accept it readily, and there's a lot of homes selling. And they're all essentially in that mold. So I very much respect y'all's opinion on that, but, you know, the market has an opinion, too, and that's what we have to follow as a business.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
What is the price point? You were mentioning they're similar to the price point of Serenity Point and Lake Ridge, but I thought they were much more.
Serenity Point is, you're talking a completely different product. Stonecrest Villas are probably a little bit more on par with the single-family that he's doing here, but those are attached patio homes. So even there, it's still a much different product than what Bob and Madamie Homes is looking at here. I think the homes in Serenity Point are going in the low fours at this point. And then River, excuse me, yeah, River Lakes, those are all brick that I think Ryland is doing. And I'm not sure what those price points are, but Serenity Points, I think, in the low fours, low to mid-fours.
Jerry, do you want to open up for public comments?
Yeah, I was going to ask if there's any more questions from counsel. If not, I'd like to ask if there's any questions from the planning commission?
Thank you all.
Okay. Yeah, if not, I think somebody signed up, right? Chris Valevitz?
Okay. Just come to the mic, state your name and your address.
So I'm Chris Valevitz. I'm at 3221 Alder Court. I live in the Lake Ridge Development. So I understand that, you know, we can't stop development here. We need to grow the area and stuff like that. So I don't have any objections to annexing this onto the city. What I have issue with is the small lot size, same concerns that you guys had here. And also, you mentioned how the lots look. They look small. If you have to have a small lot like that, don't like to see the townhomes, don't like what they, how they appear, and they bring in higher population density to the area. If that has to be looked at, then I'd like to see a greater buffer area from the road. So right now, there's the right-of-way from the power lines, which is cleared, but then maybe beyond that line, where the natural tree line is, reserve another 50 feet of that to protect the view. One of the reasons why we moved here is because it's, looks like a small country road, but I'm still living right near the city. That's nice, and it'd be nice if we could preserve some of that. Other things, we also commented on the trailers that are already there. There's only three or four of those, and they're set back quite a bit. You don't really see those when you're driving down the road. But I don't have a problem with a development coming in there, but let's do it smart. I don't see a reason why we have to offer lower-income housing, and I think that might be too low for this area. I disagree with the statements about this is going to be targeted for empty nesters. From what I heard, this is targeted towards smaller families, younger families, and starter homes. Generally, that's lower income. So I'm not in favor of the lot size and the type of homes that are going to be there. No further comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, just so you know, the planning commission today is just to vote on whether, recommend whether or not the zoning is appropriate for this.
Right.
So if there aren't any other questions, I'm going to...
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Go ahead, Jerry, please finish.
Okay. No any other questions or anything? I'd like to go ahead and close the meeting. I'd take a motion to adjourn and give it back to counsel. All right? All right? Motion.
One second. I have on my agenda here that you guys are going to come back to us with a recommendation.
Yes, we're going to go back and discuss.
Okay. Just for clarification?
Yes.
Okay. So the public comments part of this is closed, as far as you're concerned. And you guys are going to adjourn, and you're going to have a meeting to discuss it, and then come back with your recommendation? Right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is a public hearing in regards to the fiscal year 2015-16 utility fund budget. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have been notified by the City of Rock Hill, as well as the Town of Fort Mill, in regards to upcoming rate increases. The rates are basically being driven because of increases from City of Rock Hill. I've included the chart that's up on the screen now, that our audiovisual folks are showing to the folks that are watching from their televisions. The, you can see in the columns, you've got the Rock Hill rate to Fort Mill on the TCUD-1 water rates. Their current rate to Fort Mill is $1.43 per 1,000 gallons. Fort Mill's rate by contract to us is 30 cents above that, taking it to $1.73. Rock Hill has notified Fort Mill, and thus Fort Mill has notified us, that their rate is going to $1.61 effective July 1st. Those that were on council, last summer, remember, we did a rate increase at the same point in time, and these were the rates that we carried over into the new fiscal year. So based on the $1.61, Fort Mill's rate to us would be $1.91. The T-GK rate that you see in the gray column, currently, the TCUD-1 water rate is $4.57 per 1,000 gallons, giving us a margin of $2.84 per 1,000 gallons. The proposed new rate before council later on this evening would be $4.75 per 1,000 gallons, again, keeping that margin at 2.84. So it's just passing that rate increase from Rock Hill, passing it through, and maintaining where we are on other things. The TCUD-2 water rate, this one's a little bit different. Right now, as counsel will recall, we do have a contract with York County. That contract will be expiring in the next month or so, as our booster pumps come online, and it will be on the Fort Mill water system. The good news there is, because we're able to make that change, the TCUD-2 water rate will only go up by one cent per 1,000 gallons. So it would go from $5.97 per 1,000 gallons to $5.98 per 1,000 gallons, again, keeping that 407 margin, and just passing that rate through. And again, that one, the reason that one, that middle column, as far as Fort Mill rate to T-GK, that $1.90 in the current year, that's coming from York County. So that's, it puts them at a dollar, you know, Fort Mill will be charging across the board $1.91 on our water. The last one is the sewer rate, and this is a tough one. And Rock Hill is doing all these rate increases based on expansions of their treatment plan as, sewer treatment plan, as well as their water treatment facility. Their current rate to T-GK is $3.22 per 1,000 gallons, and our rate to our customers $4.79, giving us a margin of $1.57. Their new rate, effective July 1, will be $3.83 per 1,000 gallons, which would push our rate to $5.40 per 1,000 gallons. For an average TCUD-1 customers, this is Lake Shore, Serenity Point, Stonecrest, Lake Ridge, and the like, the average water sewer bill is, for 2015, was $66.20. The new average is, new average bill is basically looking at about a $4.30 per month increase on the average bill, taking it up to approximately $70.50, which is still a far cry from what mine is each month. But just so that everybody knows, you know, kind of what we're looking at on the average on TCUD-1. Those are the, as required by state law, we do have to have a public hearing anytime rates are enacted or changed. Thus, the public hearing tonight. These rates would not go into effect, provided counsel approves, until July 1. It would be staff's intention to, if these rates are approved, these would be the rates that would be before council for the '16-'17 fiscal year. Just, Mayor, I'm done.
I have a question. Just to reiterate, I heard you say it once, but across the board, are all we're doing is passing on the rate increases? We're not changing our rates?
We're changing our rate to reflect the rate increases being charged to us, but we're not picking up any additional margin.
Had the rate increase not occurred...
We would not be changing ours.
Got you.
That is correct.
And is there any, why is our margin what it is? I mean, would a drop in the margin, meaning a drop in the increase of the rate, what effect would that have on the city?
The, your margins are what we use in order to operate and maintain the systems. Specifically with TCUD-2, we've got a significant bond note out on that, and we have covenants with our lender on our debt service coverage. But our base rate covers some of our, covers the majority of our fixed costs that we've got on the system. But then you've got operational costs that can fluctuate, and our margins are where they are now to make certain that we can cover those, as well as depreciation on the system. So, you know, if we were to, so to speak, eat the rate increase and not pass that through, obviously, we would see a dip in our margins, which would make it extremely difficult to finish the fiscal year, move into the next fiscal year in a positive fiscal manner, and still be able to maintain the system at the level it needs to be maintained at.
Thank you.
Answered my question. Ryan?
My only question is, at what point in time, because we're maintaining that same margin, average 50% at this point in 2017. As time goes on, just from a business perspective, if the, our cost of serve is going to increase as we continue to grow, the cost of sewer and water coming from Fort Mill continues to... to increase, but we keep our margin flat. Now our margins are, you know, 2017 at 50%-ish, and down to 40% by 2021. And not that we want any citizens to pay any more than they already are, it's a fact of life, but at what point in time do we say, okay, our cost of serve is increasing, the cost of receive these services is increasing?
Mm-hmm.
Is the city just going to eat that, or is that something at that point we pass down to the customers?
Excellent question, and that's one reason why, as we have looked at different annexation opportunities in the past, being able to grow our utility is one of the biggest things that we look at, because we're able to defray that cost to where you're not having to look to continue to uptick the margins. You're able to keep them, I'm not saying that we'll always be at $2.84 on TCUD-1 water, but you're not going to have to have astronomical marginal gains so long as you're able to continue to add to that customer base. The strength of utility is absolutely in the number of customers that it has. You know, the fact that we purchased, you know, TCUD-1 had gotten to a level that it allowed us to be able to purchase TCUD-2. The fact that we did purchase TCUD-2 allowed us to go back to town of Fort Mill and negotiate a much lower overall water rate, because they were going to get more customers, you know, it gave us bargaining power, so to speak. But now we're able to defray those costs. Instead of it being over 100 people, if you can take those same costs and defray them over 1,000 people, you're able to keep your margins in check for the most part.
Of course, I think the strength and weakness of growing utility is the number of customers that it has.
Very well said.
Really, so...
Any comments from council?
Nope.
Are there any public comments? It's a, any public comments? It's a public hearing? No? You were moving. I thought maybe you were going for the, I thought you were going for it. All right. Closed public comments. We move on to item number four, which is public comments. The list that we have put out in front, no one had signed up for it. Are there any public comments? Has anyone had any second thoughts about a comment or anything? There being none, we move on to item number 5A on the agenda. Council, before you are the minutes from the council meeting that we had on April 18th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number six on the agenda is the Carolina Show Ski Team. Would you like to stand up and state your name and address?
Ernie Riddle with us tonight.
Ernie, good deal.
Ernie Riddle, acting president of Carolina Show Ski Team.
And company.
And company. We have, on the board...
That's the rest of the troop.
We have Ron Ancevik, Carrie Ancevik, Rick Kara, Dave LaValle, Tammy LaValle, Rebecca Brauch, and Aaron Brock. And we appreciate you having us speak a little bit tonight. One of the main things that we wanted to get to and let you know, the docs that, well, eight years ago, we had no doc, not even a chance of thinking about a doc, and with the city council and some other people, put together a plan and was able to get permitting, which took another, what, four years? And, you know, in a four-year process, where you don't know if you're going to get it, you might get it, you won't get it, you don't put together really a capital plan of how are we going to pay for these. So when the permitting came through, it said that we had one year to complete the docs. Well, there, you're on a one-year timeframe. So we had eight people that chipped in money for this with a payback of, hoping in three years, and we had a lot of sweat equity in them. And this past December, we were able to pay those off, which was, you know, a great feat for the team. Within that same year, you know, you lose a motor here, and, you know, you have constant expenses, but we made it through. Now, you know, fast forward to March, you know, the equipment trailer was stolen, which was, you know, another blow to us, but thanks to the city of TIC-K citizens as well, I think we're going to be fine for June 3. We may look a little ragtag for a while. The equipment that was in it was, most of it was all specialty, handmade. Those things, yes, you can buy them, but there's not, you can't go to Walmart and pick them up. You know, they're specialty-made, they're made one at a time. So it's a process to get everything back up and going. We, we're going to be ready for June 3 show, for what, you know, it will be a show, it won't be canceled, and we'll move on and make it through for many more years. Now, we do definitely appreciate the help that the city has given us and the partnering with the city to make Windjammer Park a nicer park. We put, try to put a lot of effort in out there as well. So hopefully, hopefully, we can keep this partnership going.
Hopefully, yes, sir.
Well, Ernie, it's a great time for you to become the acting president of the Carolina Show Ski Team.
Yeah.
Reminds me of a joke. Besides that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the play?
I was thinking the very same thing.
Well, you know...
I think you stole that from me anyway.
Probably.
Yeah.
The, I will say that the last meeting that I was scheduled to come to was for the Carolina Show Ski Team, and it's been a few years ago, and I'm glad I made it here today, because that day, we were, had a head on at Zora Road.
Oh, my God.
And so we didn't make it that night.
Yeah.
But we survived through it, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We appreciate all you guys are doing. We really do.
Have a great season, ragtag or not.
Thanks, guys. The wheels are turning. Item number 6B on the agenda is the proclamation for National Boat Safety Week. Whereas most recent national statistics on recreational boating incidents include 4,064 boat accidents, 548 fatalities, 418 drownings, and 2,678 injuries, and $39 million in property damage. And whereas the most common type of vessel involved in reported incidents are open motorboats 47%, personal craft 17%, cabin motorboats 15%, and whereas operator intent, intention...
Inattention.
Inattention, thank you. Improper lookout, operator inexperience, excessive speed, and alcohol rank as the top five primary contributing factors in incidents. And whereas in the nation, the top ranking states for reported boating incidents, North Carolina and South Carolina tied for seventh place. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the council of the city of TIC-K that the week of May 21st through 27th, 2016 will be National Boat Safety Week. With boating season upon us, we remind residents and the guests who visit Lake Wiley that the Wear It campaign encourages you to wear your life jackets. Signed today, May 16th, 2016. Item number 6C on the agenda is the proclamation announcing Police Officer Memorial Day. Proclamation for Police Officer Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whereas members of the TIC-K Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens in our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that law enforcement officers recognize their duty to serve the people of the community by protecting them against violence and disorder. And whereas law enforcement officers of the TIC-K Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and now therefore be proclaimed, the mayor and the council of the city of TIC-K have directed all flags and city buildings be flown at half-staff yesterday, May 15th, 2016, in recognition of Police Officers Memorial Day, and in memory of those law enforcement officers who have through courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, or have become disabled in performance of the duty, and that we honor those law enforcements presently serving our community. Signed today, May 16th, 2016.
I want to give that to Steve.
I don't have one to give Steve. You want to come up, Steve? Recognize you? Let's have the police chief come up. Come on, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate that. We find this to be an important week. I can say that I lost a partner of mine in 1998. Somebody was stealing crab legs and killed them. So I find this week to be important for all of the law enforcement, and thank you for recognizing it.
Thank you for what you do and your team as well.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Catch the guy who drove off.
Item number 6D on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing EMS Week. EMS Week proclamation. Whereas emergency services are a vital public service, and whereas members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-the-hospital medical care providers. Whereas members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services provided by Designated Emergency Medical Services Week, and therefore be proclaimed, the mayor and the city council of TIC-K in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim May 15th to 21st, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme of EMS strong call to care, we encourage all the community to observe this week and apply the lessons of safety and appreciation every day. Signed today, May 16th, 2016. I do have a proclamation to give to Robert White from Piedmont EMS. As you all know, we have Piedmont stationed outside the city at the police department, and they have been a great help to us as a city and have saved many lives, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Very appreciative. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Real quickly, on behalf of Piedmont EMS, it's a privilege to serve you, Mayor, and also the council members in every constituent here in the county. These are your team members here that work your area quite frequently. Stop in and say hello to them. We'd be glad to show you our services, and we'd be glad to show you our abilities, and show you what we do each year and day. And it's a pleasure to serve you, and we're proud to be a part of Piedmont EMS.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob. On that note, I don't know if you guys read the rewind, which was two weeks ago, or was it last week, that we recognized a few of our firefighters, two weeks ago, firefighters. And one of them that we recognized, Stan Hutton. Katie interviewed him and asked him, you know, what can we do for you, you know, to show your appreciation? And he said, just come up and say hello. That's all he wants us to do. So you see these guys, you know, who are working the trucks, and they may be cleaning out the truck or whatever, and they're at the police department? Stop by and say hello. You see the police officer, stop by and say hello, and just, you know, talk to them. They're human beings just like we are, and they just want to interact with us, and it's good. And one of the things that I like what Steve is doing is he's interacting more with the younger people, so that they get to know a police officer, and Scott is doing it as well with the fire department. They're getting to know a firefighter and a police officer when they don't need him or her. So it's pretty good that they're getting more comfortable with the public service people that we have. So I thank all three of you guys for the service that you provide to this community. Item number seven on the agenda, 7A, is the introduction of first reading for a bond ordinance for a fire station in Stonecrest. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you a bond ordinance that would allow for the funding of a fire station in Stonecrest. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Paul Truce, maybe to introduce the ordinance. Paul is our bond attorney, and let him introduce the ordinance to the public and to council.
Thank you, Charlie. Mayor, members of council, again, my name's Paul Truce, with Hanger-Sinkler Boyd Law Firm in our Charleston office. The bond issued before you would authorize an amount not to exceed $2,632,000 of general obligation bonds for the fire station and other municipal improvements. That amount could be reduced on second and final reading, but could not be increased. It's a very simple bond order, it's because it's, you are borrowing less than $10 million this year, so you have, your bonds will be bank-qualified, which means it'll be very attractive to banks, even lower interest rate than usual, even in a very low interest rate environment like we're in now. So we will sell these bonds without a rating, just on institutional sale by competitive bid to banks for their own portfolios. They must certify they're not buying the bonds with intent to resell. This is the cheapest, most effective way to sell a bond, because it avoids having to do a rating agency presentation, pay Moody's, pay Standard &amp; Poor's, pay an investment banker, pay the printers for official statements. So it will be done through a competitive sale, just to the banks. We anticipate a very attractive interest rate environment. After second reading, we'd be, we'd have to go to an RFP and anticipate being able to sell and deliver the bonds, sell the bonds in late June and deliver sometime immediately before or after the 4th of July. Be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Paul, Dottie?
No, sir.
Ryan?
Nothing.
David? Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm standing motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading of a bond ordinance and an amount not to exceed 2.632 million, and authorize the city manager to use up to $650,000 from the general fund reserve for the construction of the new fire station to be located in Stonecrest Development. I guess that's still good.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for the benefit of the citizens, the motion that was distributed said an amount of 1.982 million, and if you've been at prior meetings discussing this, we talked about a bond for 1.982 million and money being used out of the general reserve for $650,000 to meet the total cost of this commitment. The council's going to meet again toward the end of this month, I guess on May 31st, actually, to have a CIP meeting, and we will discuss in more detail the funding or the financing for this fire station, which is going to be up by the Walmart, up by Stonecrest, that area, if you're not aware of that. So the amount, we have to decide whether we want to put any money from the general reserve up to support this, or if we want to finance the entire amount, given that the bond rating is, or the bond interest rates are very favorable and so forth. So I just wanted to clarify why what you saw distributed might look a little different than the motion that we just made. But we will not borrow more than 2.632, and we must know the exact amount of the bond that we're going to have by the time we get to second read. That's it for me.
David? Ryan?
Nothing.
Ken? Also, just to include in that, if there are donations made to the fire station, like one was suggested, to all of us, you know, passing the boot and things like that, that would reduce the amount of money that we could potentially borrow, or we would have that money so that we could pay back the bond. So that's also an option for us. I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item number 7B on the agenda is an introduction of a first reading for an ordinance, to amend ordinance 491 regarding the fiscal year 2015-16 TCUD budget. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor stated, this is a ordinance, to amend ordinance 491, which is our fiscal year 2015-2016 utilities budget fee schedule. And the proposed rates were discussed during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We would ask for council's... We would ask for council's favorable reading at this time.
Thank you Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the FY 15-16 Utilities Budget Fee Schedule.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford and I have a second by David O'Neil. I think you were getting ready to do the first.
There you go. You got me.
Second by David O'Neil. Any council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, singling saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven, six, yeah, 7C. Thank you. Planning Commission Recommendation. Susan Britt?
Thank you Mayor, members of council. The Planning Commission recommends approval of rezoning of the tax map numbers 644-000-04547 4849 5051 52 and 53 from RUD in the county to PD in the city as appropriate. However, I do want to note that the sketch plan, which is the master plan, will be approved by the Planning Commission at their June 13th meeting because the developer intends to make some minor adjustments based on some of the input he's received at the public hearing. This could include some adjustment of the open space that could kind of eliminate some of the perception of the houses being too close, some, you know, just some of those types of design issues. So he's going to do that and then the, this could then, final approval of the sketch plan would be at June 13th, prior to your first reading of the ordinance for the annexation and zoning on June 20th.
Okay. Thank you Susan. Any questions for Susan?
No. No, but I do have one of Charlie. I understand that I had specifically asked for less density and larger lots, larger cost for the homes and the developer had looked into that. What was his reasoning for that not being feasible for his, him?
I wish that the developer was still here because he's better prepared to answer that question. He went through an entire math session based on the cost of land, cost of development based on the topography of that land. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, but I did, I did take that request to the developer for larger, maybe more wooded lots, things of that nature. And basically in going that route, he would be doing this development in the red, in a nutshell, is what he brought back to me. But I can definitely try to get his math and equations in writing that I can send out to council.
Thank you Charlie.
Charlie, if changes are going to be made, what did the Planning Commission just approve then? All they approved was just the zoning.
Just the zoning.
Just the rezoning.
Gotcha.
Correct. The annexation and the actual rezoning lies strictly with you guys to be heard during the first read.
And Charlie, I would like to request that the developer come back on the 13th with the new presentation to let us everyone know what that is and then he can also...
13th is Planning Commission.
You mean on the 20th?
Right.
At the council meeting or?
Well, I've heard the 31st too. Not really sure.
Well, the 31st is our CIP meeting. But can he come back at our next regular meeting before we approve this? I guess to answer Jen's question about the wooded lots having a lot of...
Well, he would be, I mean, I think he's planning on being here for the year June 20th regular council meeting.
Okay. That's perfect then.
That's what she means.
That's perfect.
Okay.
I mean, really quite honestly, just from a procedural perspective, this is just my opinion, but we got into this discussion when we had Windhaven too and other things. We actually, when we had something else on Dam Road, the trash thing. Because the Planning Commission's job was, is to look at rezoning in this case and remember, it's always about what does our ordinance say? And we get into all these details about what the builder's doing and what kind of homes and how much and all of that. And from my perspective, that's not appropriate for a Planning Commission meeting here when we're talking about rezoning. I mean, once we get that done, having a presentation by the builder, just like we did for Windhaven, is perfectly appropriate. But the Planning Commission's job is to say, is this in accordance with our plan and our ordinance and something that should be approved, whether it's a thousand houses or five houses or a goat farm or whatever it is. So I just think the timing of tonight's presentation by the developer was not appropriate.
A little premature?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do think we should hear from him, much as we did with Windhaven because it is helpful.
Well, I think he gathered some interesting information from us, you know, that he didn't hear directly from us. He heard from the Planning Commission, didn't hear directly from us what we're looking for. And to be perfectly honest with you, a few of my comments did come from Planning Commission members.
Okay.
So that's where that goes. Item number 7D on the agenda is the sidewalk trail, Head Park renovations and walking trail. City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, members of council. Previous council meetings and in previous discussions, Ms. Stalford had brought up the potential for the sidewalk or extending a sidewalk from the T G K Drive parking lot at Trailhead down past the fountain and then installing, yeah, and moving on up TK Drive, Gold Hill Road. You'll see that, and in our last conversation about it, we were looking at and working on obtaining costs for alternatives, things of that nature. We've included those in the, in your packet tonight. You're looking at, to do the, to change the pedestrian pathway as it goes through Trailhead Park, you're looking at approximate cost of $14,585. This would be to lower the hill and making it more ADA accessible through there. And just for the public certification, the city did not install that trail. The Lake Shore developer, Newland, did. And then to do the sidewalk, and this doesn't include the utility relocates going through there, but those are approximate, the figures we've gotten right now are approximately $5 to $8,000 to do the sidewalk. You're really not a whole lot difference in price other than the utility relocates between the two. Staff's opinion, if council does want to do one of the two, I think changing the trail, the slope of the trail as it comes to Trailhead is probably the best. You've already got a crosswalk there at Shoreline Parkway. Unless we remove that trail, you're still going to have that crosswalk at Shoreline Parkway to come up and then you would now be installing a new, actually two new crosswalks, one across Shoreline at the traffic light and then one going across TK Drive per SE DOT regs. You're going to put them a lot, you're going to put pedestrians potentially a lot closer to that fountain. We already have issues with vandalism over there. They're already making their way over there. This would give them a more direct route to it. If council does want to appropriate the funding for this, staff's recommendation would be to adjust the trail, but obviously if council wants to go the way of the sidewalk, we'll most certainly line up the contractors and whatnot to make sure that that happens as efficiently and as expeditiously as possible. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn that, turn it back over to you and council.
I guess your requested action on here is for us to discuss which way we want to go with it and then make a motion. I see that Eddie Smith and Sons Paving Company is the only bid that we have here. Did we ask anyone else?
Those are just the quotes. Based on the amounts, we'd put it out for bid.
Okay. So based on the fact Eddie Smith would say 14.5, we could have somebody else come along and say it would be less?
Could, once we put it out for bid, yes sir. This was, this was just a matter of getting quotes so that we could, we could tell council what you're looking at price wise.
Where does the funding come from?
Council would have to allocate funds from your reserve funding. We don't have it in the current fiscal year budget if we're going to do it this year.
Okay. Ryan?
Well, at least we don't have funds identified at this point in time for it.
Ryan?
I don't have anything. We discussed it a little bit briefly. You know, personally, I kind of agree with Charlie with the walking trail versus the sidewalk, just for the aesthetics look from the road, take away from that fountain and whatnot. But that's, that's all I have to gain. I think it's an excellent idea that Jen brought to the table, you know, help people get across the street right there, but I'm not the local pro in this, so it's, I'd go with the majority here.
Jen?
I can see both sides of this. I do look at aesthetically how the intersection doesn't look complete without having a sidewalk there. And it's not just for those who are going through the park, it's also runners and bikers and such like that, but we still have a connectivity issue from getting from the trail up there. I would definitely like to see it executed in the least amount of money and you said that this would still be ADA compliant through the park by cutting through.
Correct. And some of that is Tim Gillette, our operations director and I, as we had a conversation on the trail part of it, some of that could be self-performed by staff. I mean, the excavation process, pulling out the existing asphalt and lowering it down is, I mean, you're talking, I mean, that's $3,200. It could be self-performed. The retaining wall, because you're getting up to about five foot in height, I'd rather have a contractor do that. So the contractors on the hook, make sure that things jam up. And then obviously, we would look for the contractor to do the asphalt work. So potentially you could, if staff were able to self-perform on some of this, you're, you could reduce it by about three grand, you know, in cost going through that way. My kids love that hill going through it. They think it's like a roller coaster ride, but it is definitely not an ADA hill, very difficult for a lot of folks to be able to get up and down it. Yeah, it's definitely something, yeah. I hate that it took you asking for a, you know, for us to look at the sidewalk for us to realize, you know what, we need to do something different with this hill here and make it a lot more user friendly for folks going through there. But I think it definitely will, I think it's something we definitely need to look at regardless.
Dottie?
I don't know. I'm not sure if we need it. I mean, I think, I know Jen brought it up. I don't know, haven't heard from a ton of people that this has been a big issue. It's one of those things that might be nice to have. I mean, unless we have a real compliance issue and we're breaking the law in some fashion, that's a whole different ballgame. But there is a path to get across the street. It does have to take you back off the main path and cross over. And, 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 you know, if we think we might want to do it, we don't have money earmarked for it this year, so I'd rather wait until we go through the budget process in the summer and talk about it a little bit more and come up with, make sure we understand what the right approach is and that we, if we think, we feel that strongly about it at that point to put it in the budget for 2017, 18. Yeah, that, 16, 17.
Well, I guess, a little bit of more background, this was an approved sidewalk two budgets ago, but for $8,000.
I don't remember that.
But when the intersection changed, it went bye-bye. So, and the reason why it was brought up and the reason why I kept mentioning how I had concerns is because of all the people who try to use the Memorial Gardens and all the people who go through that to get to school or use it for athletics. And we have a lot of older residents have great difficulty getting from Trailhead Park or from that other parking lot next to the residence to get over to the gardens for events like the Memorial Day ceremony coming up. So there really is difficulty getting across that street. I can say it because I volunteer there all the time and people don't like to slow down for you, even when you have children. So that's why I thought a controlled stoplight, controlled area was why I suggested that to begin with, so that you have more safety for bikers and people just trying to cross the street. But I am sensitive to the budget, so, but I do feel there is a need. Because it's not a new sidewalk, it does not have to be ADA compliant and right now it is definitely not. There's, there's great difficulty for anybody with a walker, even a stroller, pushing anybody or trying to get up that hill. So it is great that we have a lot of people who are inactive in the golf carts that help our residents get across the street and I think that has been a success for us, transporting those people to those events across the street. That's been very, very positive.
I don't think it'll stop people from going through the Memorial Gardens.
Oh no, we encourage that.
It's a sure, I mean, you know, bikes and all that, they're still going to do that. They're not going to go up and over.
No, that's, yeah, there was no intention of trying to divert those folks.
Okay.
David?
Well, I'd agree with Dottie. If it's not something that we really, really need to do right away, I'd prefer to wait till the next budget, discuss it and I profess to be a little ignorant and I've been up there many times, but I've just never noticed. I mean, and maybe it'll give me a chance to really kind of walk the terrain and look at it a little better, but I'd, I'd like to push it back to the budget when we discuss the budget since we don't have the money already earmarked.
It would please us, council, I'd like to ask for public input.
Sure.
Step to the microphone and state your piece. What do you think about us changing the walk over the hill behind the Lake Shore sign, go over the hill to the Living Memorial Garden? Is that something that we need to do or do we put a sidewalk along TK Drive to the traffic light? What do you, what do you think? Let us know, you're here.
And to give a little background, it was something that Jen proposed or brought back to the table, I guess, based on elderly having access from that parking lot to get over to the gardens. It was, so they don't have to go over that hill. That's basically where it came from.
Come on Linda, you're never shy.
(inaudible).
I didn't say that.
I did. I've never had a problem with it, but I use my golf cart and I love being able to have the cartaholics group assist with the activities that are held there. I've never tried to walk that hill. I've never seen anybody having a problem with it and I know exactly what you're talking about. I mean, if it's not a necessary budget item, I would delay it.
Thank you.
No one?
My name's Kathy Masters, 472 Point Claire. I like the idea of a sidewalk that goes in front of the, because when you're coming up the trail, it just sort of stops and you kind of figure out to go through the parking lot and find the back way in, but it just seems like since there are sidewalks everywhere else and walking trails, I would kind of expect to see one in front of the fountain. Money's no object, they're going to give us more.
Whoever they are.
Charlie, are there any?
Those trees.
Bonds or funds? I know in the past, we've had monies left that were left over towards the end of the year that were put towards sidewalk, sidewalks a couple of years back maybe? Is there any?
I know we had some money that went towards the sidewalks that, near Rundy and it went towards Anchorage.
Was left over from something?
Oh, that was, that was, that was a, that was a funded project. It was budgeted to do the sidewalk, but what we've done in the past is where we have ended up with a surplus of revenues over expenditures as we, as we get towards the tail end of the budget year. Council has from time to time taken some of that additional funds that we've had and earmarked it towards a project such as this. Yes.
Well, is this something that council would consider discussing at the next time we talk about the budget, develop for next year?
Jen, I think that you have the majority of council willing to discuss it at the next budget, but I don't think you have the majority of council to move forward today.
That's absolutely fine.
So I think...
I did not anticipate us going forward because we did not earmark it anything for this year, so.
So then I'll make a motion that we, we discuss this item at our next budget workshop.
Do we need to make a motion on this? I don't think so.
Just to go on the record, just to go on the record. So I made a motion, David O'Neil seconded, all in favor, singling saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report. City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple of items. First, I think I reported maybe a couple of months ago on the mail delivery issues we're having down in Lakewood and mayor's efforts was able to get mail delivery to Pod B and E. Pod H, which is the estate home section, was still without mail delivery and we've now got residents down there. Mayor Shepherd, thank you for setting up the meeting with Ms. Fox, who is the interim postmaster, the former postmaster that instituted this new rule of collection boxes has been, he told us it was his way of the highway and then his bosses showed him the highway. So we're now dealing with the interim, but I was notified that on this past Friday, Pod H got their mail delivered. So they're delivering down in Lakewood, so small victories. Congratulations there.
And I don't get mail anymore.
Counsel, to update, to update y'all and apologies, we have, I have already updated the Lakewood community...
Council to update, uh, to update y'all, um, and apologies, we ha- I have already updated the Lakewood community. Uh, they asked us to come out to their, uh, annual HOA meeting. The trails, uh, in Lakewood that have been on the books since oh-eight, oh-nine, I believe, we finally have all the funding. And as of May twenty-fourth, I found out today, we'll have a pre-construction meeting, and those trails have to be completed by S E D O T's contractor by November thirtieth. So this summer, they're getting trails. Hot dang. Congratulations again for Lakewood. The, the, I do want to say that the, uh, the contract, uh, for the third time, or the bid did come in, uh, over budget again, uh, for, for the third time. And it got to the point where we just, we couldn't remove any more sections of trail, or it would just make no sense in doing the trail. I, uh, asked, um, our current Chair of RFATs, Mayor Shepherd, to see if RFATs could come up with a little extra in the C Mac Kitty for that thing, and which they did. The developer paid the, uh, the additional matching funds, uh, so that, we, we basically told D O T, do not put this out for bid again. We gotta get these things going. So, uh, glad to have that, that project getting ready to, uh, to start, um, in the very near future. If you weren't at, uh, at Runde Park Saturday night, you may have been one of the few, uh, that didn't make it up there. Great concert, great first food truck rally. Uh, it was packed. Got a small wager with the mayor as to what the attendance is gonna look like in June, but, uh, we're looking forward to, hey, I hope I'm wrong, and I hope I lose that one. Uh, love to see another great crowd out in June. Uh, June eighteenth will be our next show, but, uh, I think everybody had a great time on May fourteenth. Uh, the barbecue truck served four hundred and fifty plates, um, and he was one of seven vendors, I think, we had there. So, uh, everybody had a good time there. T U K Connect update. Um, our first meeting is scheduled, uh, Monday, May twenty-third, and we'll be here. We currently have thirty-nine liaisons, but please note, I need, or we need, uh, somebody from Chelsea a day, somebody from Daybreak, Fairway Point, Marquesas One, which is the first half of Marquesas as you come off of Windward. Malachi Two, which is actually basically from Maikai down to the cul-de-sac, so it's the, the last half of Malachi. Malachi Extension, Neptune's Landing, Silver Goal, and Windjammer. So those are, those are where we still have vacancies. So if you, if you're listening to this, you hear this, Council, if y'all know anybody that's interested, send them our way. Um, we'd love to have them for our first meeting, uh, for our first kickoff meeting on May twenty-third. Backflow Preventer Testing Forms due June first. Um, everybody should have received those in their, uh, in their utility bills. Again, D H X rule, not ours. Memorial Day, uh, City Hall's gonna be closed. Um, the garbage pickup will be delayed for, uh, one day in both areas. So if you're a Monday customer, it'll be picked up on Tuesday. If you're a Tuesday customer like Lakewood, Stonecrest, Serenity Point, your garbage collection will be on, uh, Wednesday. Recycle is normal schedule. Memorial Day Five K with our wonderful T U K Veterans Association is gonna be on May twenty-ninth. And, uh, on May thirtieth, uh, on Memorial Day, uh, they'll be doing a, uh, their, their annual ceremony out there at ten a.m. They do a wonderful job with both of those events. We hope everybody's able to come out for it. Congratulations to the Beautification Committee, uh, on getting a five hundred, uh, five hundred dollar grant from Keep York County Beautiful. And they're using that, I believe, for supplies, et cetera, in the Memorial Gardens on some plants and things.
Yeah, new garden space.
So they, they did a great job. Congratulations to, uh, to Patty Martin and, and, and those folks with the Beautification Committee. Our Capital Improvements Plan Joint Workshop with Planning Commission and City Council will be on May thirty-first at six p.m. I've gotten some questions, um, I think mainly from Planning Commission as to whether we're gonna televise and record that. Uh, because I will have department heads here, yes, we will. So, uh, no issues there. Kara Drain from Kataba Cog will be on hand, um, and, and walk us through that, get input from both Planning and City Council. Staff has, uh, we've begun the budget process for F Y sixteen, seventeen. Council, if I can, I would like to get a list of, uh, budget goals, projects, et cetera, uh, from you guys by June twenty-fourth. Uh, if there are certain areas that you think need to be focused on from the, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, if there's a, you know, maybe you've got a project idea or something like that. Just shoot, shoot us, uh, if you can kind of put your thoughts together, shoot me an email by June twenty-fourth. That way, I've got time to work with the appropriate department heads, um, to look at identifying cost and, and things of that nature. So, um, yeah, that way y'all have got some input on the front end before we ever even, uh, present to you in the, in the budget workshop. If you can get your calendars out, Council, I'd like to set, tentatively set, uh, for July twentieth as our budget workshop. Uh, that is a Wednesday, um, at six p.m. And we would, uh, obviously do that here and could televise it and all that good stuff. But by doing it on July twentieth, it gives us the opportunity to advertise, um, for the, um, public hearing that's required and be able to have our, um, first read in August, second read in September, without any additional special meetings. Now, obviously, if, uh, if we need to, um, you know, coming out of July twentieth, we need to make changes and get back together, still leaves us time to be able to do that, um, and get the budget, um, get the budget published. So, uh, if we could do that on July twentieth, again, that's a Wednesday night at six p.m., that would be great. We have advertised for applications, uh, to fill the new P R T Commission. Um, we've gotten a pretty good response so far. So, uh, we're hoping to bring those applicants and names to you guys at your June, at your June twentieth regular meeting, um, so that they could be sworn in. Once approved by Council, they could be sworn in in July and get started. So, uh, we've got, got a good group of, uh, good group of names, uh, to choose from, so real excited about the response that we've gotten there. And last, but certainly not least, um, we've added a new member, brand-new member to our T U K Fire Department. Grady Tucker Blackwelder, son of firefighter Will Blackwelder, was born on Mother's Day, weighing in at seven pounds, five ounces. Uh, congratulations to Will and Megan Blackwelder on their first one, on their first child. So, uh, definitely wanted to pass that great news along. Always fun to, to see our T U K family expand. So with that, Mayor, uh, that concludes my, uh, Manager's Report.
Firefighter Blackwell doesn't, Blackwelder doesn't look old enough to have kids.
I thought the same thing.
Item number nine on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? There being none, we move on to item number ten, which is Council comments. We'll start down to my right. Dottie?
No comments.
Ryan?
Just to touch on what Charlie mentioned as far as for the Memorial Day Five K, just so everyone knows, that does benefit the Fisher House Foundation, um, which provides houses for families and military members that are getting treated at V A or medical facilities. It's a great organization. I've, uh, contributed quite a bit in the past myself. Ha, ha, had friends and family that have been a part of it. So, uh, if you can make it out there, it's a five p.m. start, so it's an afternoon start versus a morning start. So it's, uh, it'd be a little more, I don't want to say a little more fun, because it was fun before, but a little more e- easier to get there if you were up a little late the night before. And, uh, for those that are out there, you know, the city works hard taking care of the, the, the golf course and tho- those assets that we have. So please keep an eye out. You know, there's been a couple of incidences of vandalism over the last few weeks, whether it's kids home from college or just somebody acting the fool. Keep an eye out. If you see anything that looks fishy or somebody doing that, something they're not supposed to be doing, please take the time, make the phone call, make the city's job a little, little easier on keeping it T U K beautiful. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ryan. Jen?
Charlie, I was gonna ask about the boater safety course. I saw it on Facebook and I shared it, but I could, I forgot to bring that information to remind folks. When is that date? Okay, all right. Well, I won't pressure Katie.
We'll get right back to it.
So the other question I had, um, you talked about, um, the, the mail delivery, which reminded me of something that every once in a while, I get these questions about the zip code. Has, has, what is the progress, or is there any with us getting our own zip code?
Um, we've, we've asked, we've made the request, and I think the response, and Mayor, I think you had a conversation even with, uh, Representative Mulvaney. Basically, we, if we can't prove that we've had an issue with the mail delivery that was associated with the zip code, yeah, they basically said, mm, you don't get one. So, yeah, a- at this point, I think we're still gonna be saddled with the two-nine-seven-oh-eight, um, at least for the foreseeable future. But, um, that, that's what we've been told thus far, was that we've got to prove that there's a problem with the mail delivery specific to the zip code.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did want to let everyone know that the Living Memorial Gardens, we're gonna have a work day tomorrow morning, the Beautification Committee at, or I'm sorry, Wednesday at eight a.m. And, uh, we'll be pu- uh, pulling weeds and basically getting the gardens ready again, uh, for the Memorial Day Ceremony. And we have a beautification meeting on Thursday at one fifteen p.m. in the lower level meeting room of the Glennon Center. And you do, you, anybody can come. It is not like you have to be a member or anything. Uh, we welcome everybody, and you can have a green or a brown thumb. We can show you what a weed is, and you can help, so.
The boater safety course, uh, Wednesday, June eighth. It'll be in the large meeting room, uh, here at the Glennon Center from nine a.m. to five p.m.
Okay, and people probably should sh- sign up quickly. I think that you guys sold out last time.
That is correct, and they can sign up. It is free, and you can sign up through the, uh, D N R website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. David?
Just another comment about the Five K. It's, uh, in the past, we went along the golf, or the golf cart trail, and it's very hilly. This year, we're gonna go along T U K Drive. It's flatter. Everybody who ran the Five K in the past hated the course because it was way down and way up, and now it's as flat as T U K Drive can possibly be. I mean, it's, we're, we've got hills in T U K. That's just the way it is. But the flattest course we could find was along T U K Drive. So you're going out on T U K Drive and coming back along the trail. Okay? And then afterwards, that's a, that starts at five p.m., so if you're gonna get there and, and run it, you gotta get there a little early. You can pick up your packets or, or sign up at Fleet Feet. Okay, and then, uh, you get a really nice, uh, what's that, dry run shirt or something, kind of real high-tech shirt. It's not just a cotton thing. It's supposed to be a real nice shirt. Yeah, Wixop stuff. And then afterwards, Sonic Rewind's gonna play a concert here, and you can enjoy your favorite, um, malt beverage if you so desire, and just sit around and have a good time afterwards, so.
David, uh, is T U K Drive closing at any point?
That one lane, starting at, I think it's Malachi that comes up to the club.
Okay.
It's gonna run from, starting behind the Glennon Center or maybe by the Rotunda there, and down Malachi, up to Trailhead Park.
Okay.
And then back along the trail after that. So the police, um, are, we're gonna stop the traffic, and volunteers are gonna stop traffic. We're gonna have cones.
So like, from like four-thirty to five-thirty or so, T U K Drive, outbound or inbound?
Outbound.
Outbound. One lane only?
One lane only.
Closed or both lanes?
One lane.
Just one lane? Okay, so.
But it's the flattest, flattest we can find. If you need more information, um, if you're a Facebook person, it's, uh, W W W facebook dot com slash T C V A, T U K Veterans Association Five K. And then just another pitch for the memorial service we do. Um, it's a great service, and I don't just say that because I'm a veteran. It's really a good service, though. We start at ten o'clock promptly. We're military people, so time is of the essence. So please get there, be seated by nine-fifty, and you won't, you won't be sorry you met you and it's really a good service.
And that's actually on Memorial Day, May thirtieth.
That's on Memorial Day, ten o'clock in the morning. Even veterans work on Memorial Day. That's all I got.
Thank you, David. Um, I just want to talk about two things that I was invited to, um, over the past week. One was, uh, last Friday, I was invited to the, um, STEM program at T U K Elementary School. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math, uh, which are a bunch of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who, um, put robots together. Explain molecular biology. Um, it just astonished me to see these fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, um, putting these pro, these, these programs together and these, these boards, explaining what their process was. And I gotta put a shout-out to Mike, Mark Moog. He's a, um, a resident of T U K around near, um, Diamond Head Park. Um, he took that, that whole, um, project on himself, starting in September. Um, on Friday afternoons, uh, the kids would come and meet with him, and he would talk about the STEM program. And, and he taught them how to do all of those things. So phenomenal job that he did, and it was really neat to, to see these kids really interested in science. And then this past Saturday, after the fire department left, um, the T U K Lions Club, um, honored, um, the gr- the top ten percent, um, of the graduates from Fort Mill High School. And they, they, um, allowed me to introduce these, um, young people to, to, um, the Lions. And as I said that day, um, you know, these, the, these kids are our future, and, and I gotta tell you, our future is pretty bright. Just seeing some of the things that, that they are doing, you know, they're going to Clemson to study psychology and, and biochemistry, you know, dual major. Uh, we've got one girl who's going to William and Mary College, um, to study psychology. Then we have somebody else who's going for, um, biochemistry. She's going to the University of Minnesota Twin Cities. And, and I wanted to tell her that we have warmer colleges down here, but she was still going there. But it's just amazing to see what these young people are planning to do with their lives and just, I, never in my wildest dreams would I've thought some of the things that these kids are doing and, and, and what they're saying. And the activities that they're involved in, it amazes me that they have time to even sleep or do their homework, uh, with the list of things. With that being said, I want to throw a shout-out to all the graduates of two thousand and sixteen. They're graduating from, um, Fort Mill High School and Nation Ford High School this Saturday, the twenty-first. Um, I think Fort Mill is at ten o'clock, and then Nation Ford is in the afternoon. I think they switched that. So they'll be graduating, which is, which is gonna be good, and it's probably gonna add to some of our confusion around the city, uh, with these graduates out there. And then the other thing I want to mention is that, uh, the T U K Art League is, um, having an exhibit, uh, at the old Police Department Building, uh, which is the, uh, Miller Realty Group, um, on the twenty-first Saturday. They're gonna display their artwork, and they're, they're more than willing to have you come and purchase it and everything like that. So a lot of neat stuff going on. You can tell that, that T U K is starting to, um, it's getting warmer weather because more and more people are out, and it's, it's a lot of fun to be around the city. So, um, that's all I have.
Also fun to come up to the new restaurant here in the building.
Yes, that's true. What, Charlie, could you go through the hours of the new restaurant and everything? What do we, you know?
You can't, no.
You can't, you can't discuss it.
Um, they, they are open seven days a week, uh, lunch and dinner. Um, I've been a couple times myself. I've heard a lot of good feedback. Uh, there's, be patient with them. I think they did about two months' worth of work in about, uh, two weeks, uh, as far as trying to, trying to get in and things like that. Uh, they're, they're slowly gonna start marketing and things like that, but trying to get all the bugs worked out, uh, all the kinks, I should say, uh, worked out. But, uh, folks are enjoying it. Um, they're doing a great job. Uh, definitely go check out the staff at Shore Club. And again, I think they open up at about eleven, eleven-thirty, um, for, uh, for lunch, uh, every day, uh, and they're open through dinner. So, um, you know, come on out, sit on the deck, sit in the newly renovated restaurant. Um, I think folks are having a good time. I've been having good crowds up there.
Yep.
And the reason why I asked you is because the last time I was asked, you were with me. I said they're open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, which didn't go over too well, and, so, you know, I had to ask you what the hours were. Item number eleven on the agenda is Executive Session. Council intends to motion to go into Executive Session.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, I'd like to make a motion to move into Executive Session for a discussion incident to contractual matters as it pertains to Kataba Park and to receive legal advice as it relates to pending litigation.
Motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second? Second by David O'Neil. Um, any Council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, Seanger saying aye. Aye, unanimous. We're in Executive Session.